For the regular meeting of the planning commission for the city's Lowell. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please? Here.
Commissioner Flank.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yep.
Commissioner Gable.
Here.
Commissioner Craven.
Here.
Chair Martin.
Here, thank you. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Tony Ellis makes a motion, second.
How's the part?
Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the agenda as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda's accepted. Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, July 13th, 2020, our regular meeting?
I'll make a motion.
And do I have support?
Support.
And discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of accepting the minutes from the previous meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. Minutes are accepted. Are there any public comments other than the items on the agenda? Hearing none? Seeing none? Old business, there is none. So new business, site plan review for 126 West Street, Southwest Street, I should say. Andy, you want to run a short, please?
Yep. So I'm going to stand over here so you guys can hear a bit better. So this is for a 2,400 square foot, what they're describing right now to be an office and warehousing kind of building. The ultimate end use for this property is proposed to be a adult-use marijuana micro-business, which is one of those six kinds of licenses that you can get under the 120th Act. But what they've asked to do is to first only get the site plan review approved, so they can get the building constructed, and then they would come back at a later date with an application for a special land use permit, when you would then do the color clearing, notice the neighbors, and then walk through that usual lengthy report that you guys get for the marijuana attitude. So this is a fairly small parcel. It's about the size of a residential lot, to be honest with you, and in the six or seven years now that I've been working with the city, we've talked with several applicants about developing this site. It does have some limitations just due to its size. So this is the site, it sits right next to the gas station there, and then I think it's at $1,300 or something. It's right behind a Burger King. And then there's what was part of that parking lot is directly to the south. It is Zone C3. So it is zoned for, you know, in that district, adult-use marijuana facilities wouldn't be permitted now. This is a bit unusual because this isn't really evaluating the use of the property at this time. They would be permitted to use the property for some use that's permitted in the underlying zoning, because if it's permitted by rights, this were to turn into an office or a retail establishment or something like that, that's normally permitted by rights, and that could be allowed after this. But otherwise, for anything else like what's proposed, they would need to come back with a special name.
Andy, under C3, warehousing is not permitted, though?
Correct.
And that's what they're asking?
Yeah, so the site plan shows the building is kind of divided, so probably 25 to 30% of it, it looks like, is retail, which is up front facing West Avenue. And then behind that is what's described as warehousing. So one of the questions for the applicant would be that if, for some reason, the micro-business does not move forward, you know, a firm plan has to what they're going to do with that property, which is because it wouldn't be able to be used for industrial, you know, warehouse kind of use. So warehousing and things of that kind, or storage that supports a primarily retail operation is something that could be allowed. And so that'll be to discuss with them to kind of see what kind of plan B is if the Plan A does not proceed for some reason. So under completeness, they did a nice job of putting together plans for the building itself in terms of all the building permit stuff, but the site plan is missing a few pieces of information. Ultimately, the city will need a sealed plan. Now, sometimes the planning commission has approved plans that aren't sealed as long as they come back with having a seal of an architect or engineer after the fact. A few of these items that we've noted as missing here probably aren't necessary for them to include, like the size of acres of the subject property and the front setback. Not because it's not important, but because we already know that. But other items such as signs, lighting, curving, loading and unloading areas, and then landscaping, then all the utility information is something that is missing from the site plan and should be shown on a updated plan, so.
Andy, I'd also like to point out that number five, the existing zoning and use of all properties and body of the subject property. We don't even know, you know, according to the site plan, we don't even have that.
Yeah, so that's, again, that's one of those things where it's shown pretty clearly on the zoning map. I mean, it's surrounded by C3 on most sides. So, I mean, that's certainly something that the planning commission can require to show on an updated plan, but we already know what that is. So again, to me, that's not as critical as what the plan is going to be for utility connections and for stormwater management. I think there's storm sure that area, but it's not positive. So how are we going to handle those items specifically, where the connections are going to be, et cetera? That'll be helpful in moving forward on the application. So in the C3 district, the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. This property is only about 13,000, so it's legally non-conforming, both in terms of its width and its area. So ordinarily, in C3, if someone were to create a new parcel in that district, we would require a minimum of 100 feet of frontage on the street and then a minimum area of 20,000 square feet. This is an existing lot, and it meets neither of those standards, so that's what makes the lot non-conforming. However, the ordinance provides, and the city has long allowed, that as long as you meet setbacks, you can develop a non-conforming parcel. That's something that happens quite frequently, so the area of the site on its own does not bother me too much because they do need the setbacks, which they have to build and show there. But landscaping isn't shown on the plan. They do include in their narrative that low-impact ground tolerance species are proposed to be the recycled wood or ownership or something like that as a ground cover underneath the planting. And they also intend to be environmentally friendly and desire to reduce the building impact. In the C3 district, the ordinance requires one canopy tree and three shrubs, which reach 30 feet of width. That would equate to two trees and six shrubs, since they only have 66 feet of width there. So it's not too high of a standard in this particular location. And the ordinance provides some flexibility in terms of what can really fit there and what works for the site overall, so the planning commission can deviate from that. Now, we don't have a detailed landscaping plan in front of us that shows exactly what's proposed.
Just to ask a question as a matter of law precedent, I mean, fairly new. I mean, if the plan has all these incompletions, why are we, you know, why are we wasting our time? If they can't get a plan together that doesn't have all these implications, are we just going to get to the end of this and go, well, it sounds good, but you've got to come back with these complete things?
Yeah, well, I mean, it depends. So in the past, you know, there are instances where it has made sense, especially if it's like an existing building or something, there have been instances in the past when the city but when the city hasn't approved a somewhat less than complete site plan because a bunch of the information is known, which is why we process it that way. In terms of parking, zero, it's completely. So lighting, it isn't shown on the site plan, but it'll be something that'll need to be illustrated. In terms of parking, we evaluated that based on what's shown on the site plan, which is the combination of retail and warehousing uses. So we calculated that a total of nine spaces, if it were used for retail and warehousing operations. Obviously, with the end use plan of this building proposed to be a marijuana micro-business, that minimum number of parking spaces might be higher than that. And we've seen with the other marijuana establishments that we have reviewed so far, we've required all of them to increase their parking by a fair amount. So that would be something that would need to be evaluated because they'll only wait on that until they come forward with the application and we can do some research on what would be necessary at that time. Bruce, do you want me to continue through the site plan review standards? I see that Sean's here, so do you want me to?
Let's take a few minutes to hear from the applicant, and in a few minutes, or like, just a short time, can you tell us basically what you want to do now and what you're looking at in the future?
The idea is built for.
Name and address, please.
Sean Baugh, 806 North Washington. I'm representing the closers, who's the contractor. They want to get a structure up. Their original intent was a micro-marijuana building. They still may do that, but with the plethora of buildings of that nature in town right now, they're looking at other options. Some of the things that Andy had mentioned, lighting, that will be on the building. It will need code. It will, because you have residences sitting down just 200 feet, less than 200 feet to the south, we want to keep the lighting impact lower. So it won't be a high mount, it'll be lower and going across this parking lot, so that it will only light the parking lot, not the road, not the neighborhood. Parking lot dimensions are not shown in the drawing. They're standard, in my mind, always been nine by 18. The back set, which is shown as three feet, can be expanded five feet without moving the building, because I told you originally, we had 18 feet, 26 feet for the fire lane, and then 18 feet. So I can close that fire lane down to the required 24 feet and give you the five-foot barrier that you require before the sidewalk. Because this is an old residence, the water in the sewer are already there. I had talked with DPW Rich, I can't remember Rich's last name right now, a year and a half ago. And he said, yeah, we still have our water and sewer lines there. So I can take theirs and overlay them onto the site plan, so you will know where we're tying in at. As far as the stamp on the drawings, what I had explained to Andy and what I explained when we had our pre-planning meeting, was I have an engineer that will stamp these plans when I know exactly what you guys want. If you don't want a low-impact landscape, we'll put boxwood out there and we'll add the two trees in there. If you'll accept a low impact, we'll go in there with a lower hedge with either white stone chips, which might not be advantageous because you've got the gas station kids walking by all the time, or a mulch that would be environmentally friendly, low eco-impact. Things that we've offered to try and keep a low-impact of the building are things that you may not want. And if you tell me no, before it goes to the building permit, I will have my engineer stamp all the changes. You have a list of trees that are acceptable. Boxwood bushes are in this area a dime a dozen, and they are considered the prototypical separation wall. So the things that you're looking at are not included, in my mind, as I observe them, are not astronomical, or in all actuality. The drawing is set to design. The two trees across the front at 66 feet become somewhat of an impact because you have 24 feet of that as an approached driveway. So now you're at 42 feet. You start planting anything that grows in any width in that five-foot space, now you're going to be impacting the sidewalk.
Commissioners, any questions before we have any results?
Okay.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay.
So just to walk through the review standards here, so I'm starting at the bottom of page three, going out of the top of page four, my staff report. Mr. Chairman, do you just want to do this kind of one at a time like we usually do, or have you?
Uh, let's go through them, yeah, let's go through them one at a time for starting, I guess, let's see.
So the first standard talks about whether the use is proposed will adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare, and if their plan to take into account deposit uses on the adjoining property, et cetera. So as I mentioned earlier, all of these surrounding properties are Zone C3. So again, you know, this is a little bit different for you because there's not a specific use.
Andy, is the parking lot that's next to it C3, too?
Yeah.
It is C3.
Yep.
And we don't know who that's owned by or who it's used by.
That's owned by Eric Tability Weaver.
Yes. And he's actually leasing it right now to the viewership right now.
So again, you know, we can't talk too much about what the use is and how it's going to affect neighboring property because we don't fully know what those are yet. Now, if it's retail, I don't have a lot of concerns about a basic retail type of operation, that's what's shown on the site plan. If there's a different use proposed that would ultimately lead to a special land use kind of decision, then we would evaluate the land use at that time. But, you know, overall, I guess, you know, placing a building on this property in and of itself does not impede the normal utility development of this surrounding area, and it doesn't concern me, to be honest. I'm just having a little. Under item B, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to stop and you guys want to talk about that one first?
Commissioners, any questions? Okay. Uh, let's go on then.
Okay, so item B, safe, convenient, uncongested, and well-defined pedestrian circulation shall be provided. Drive spaces, whether they're circulation routes, shall be designed to promote safe and efficient traffic operations within the city. So there is a curb cut there already from West Street. And it, you know, to me, the way that they have the site laid out, they put, you know, the curb cut is on the southern end of the site, where it should be is, you know, Scarlet from Main Street that you get it. And it's a little unclear on the site plan where the paved circulation areas are going to be, which you can kind of see in all that area on the, maybe on the east side of the building there for parking would be paved. And then there is a sidewalk along the front of the property now that's connected to a main property. And they also have a eight-foot wide covered porch proposed along the front side of the building. So from a pedestrian perspective, we don't have any concerns now. In the past, with a lot of the sites on Main Street, you all have required a sidewalk or some kind of connection straight to the front of the building. You know, kind of into the front door, that's certainly something that you could require here, too. Although the site layout, because it is such a small parcel, that makes that somewhat difficult to do just because there's only room for, you know, a couple, three parking spots and a driveway. So if it's, you know, room for a five-foot sidewalk to the front door might be a little, might be a bit challenging on the property, but it might be workable depending on how things are arranged.
And as it stands right now, we don't know anything about the interior circulation.
Circulation, correct? Yeah, well, so the interior circulation is basically designed and focused on just the east half of the site. When we had a pre-application meeting, I mentioned that, you know, for a marijuana micro-business to get enough marketing to the rear of the building might be necessary just because there's only six spots, seven shops on right now, so.
What about the warehouse, do you know what good for that?
So, well, yeah, so part of it is, it depends on the nature of the activity at the warehouse. They're going to be hiding large trucks pulling in and out, you know, that'll deal, that'll give us one kind of circulation. If they're just getting small, you know, like regular-sized vans, that's very different. So part of that kind of depends on what the ultimate nature of the property is, so.
But it's not, as of right now, it's not even showing it at all, correct?
Correct, so right now, the site plan shows the six parking spots in the front. And then, you know, we talked about they have space for access around the south side of the building to the rear, but nothing specific is shown on the site plan.
Commissioners, any further questions on B?
I think I want to see a parking lot layout, especially where, like, that's definitely needed. To see where's the asphalt in, or is it all paved? Or is it gravel? I don't think it can be a dust medium.
No, it will either be concrete or asphalt. I prefer concrete.
I guess I'd like the layout of where it's going, I guess. I see the parking spots, but I don't know where it stops or starts, or.
Any other questions on B? Andy, you want to go to C then?
Yep. So C states that the arrangement of public or private vehicular connections to existing or planned streets in the area shall be claimed to provide a safe and efficient circulation system for the city. As I mentioned before, they're going to use the existing curb cut on West Street. And so I think its location is the best possible spot on that site. It's as far to the south as it can go. I don't know if it would need an additional or modified driveway permit from the city, but of course, I'll get it as a condition of approvals if you choose to approve at some point. So otherwise, I think that, you know, that connection is fine. Again, the sidewalk issue, if you want to require a sidewalk to the front of the building, that's something that you can deal with now or later, it's up to the commissioner really.
Commissioners, any question on C? Okay.
And indeed, removal or alteration of significant natural features shall be restricted to those areas which are reasonably necessary to fulfill the site. So basically, this standard means that they don't want, you know, clear cutting an entire site for just a very small development. This is pretty much a vacant site as it is, and, you know, there aren't, there isn't anything that suggests there are any important natural features on the property. It's mostly just open space, might be a couple of trees on the far west side of the lot. So, and then we've talked about landscaping already, so generally speaking, I don't think that the removal of natural features is the major problem. And then again, with landscaping, if you want to give the applicant some direction as far as what you're looking for, what you think would make sense on that site, I would find that that's also a good consideration.
Commissioners, any thoughts on that? I mean, there's nothing, there's no landscaping at all along the parking lot, that entire length, which applies up to houses, there's nothing, just nothing there.
On the parking lot?
Yeah, along the parking lot side, what is at the west side, the entire length of it, there's just nothing.
There's trees, but.
You're talking about bar paths?
Yes.
I believe there's a fence on the south side of that property. I'm not pos-
Yeah, on the south side, I'm talking about the lawn from West Street back.
Right.
All along the parking lot there.
I believe that there's a fence there, I'm not pos- because there was a dilapidated fence between.
I just drove there and I didn't see it, so.
There's no fence, there's just trees approximately every 15 feet. They're kind of like half-cut down shrub bushes.
Yeah, virtually nothing is my point.
Exactly.
And beyond the parking lot, there are houses right there. If we're putting in an industrial warehouse or anything along that line, we've been fairly consistent while putting in a buffer for that area. And certainly, there's just nothing there. As far as I'm concerned, there's nothing of value there as far as buffer goes. So I think we want to keep track of that at least.
So Bruce, you're saying we're run that property line out with like a privacy penta?
Yeah, the fence or trees or something.
That means, well, I'm just thinking because the property is so narrow and the fence only takes up a small amount.
Yeah, probably a fence would be better.
It'll save a lot of.
Yeah, yeah. I don't have a problem with that, but right now, there's just nothing there. And somewhere along the line, somebody might do something with that parking lot. In fact, they could put a house in there for all we know.
Yeah, I mean, we made everybody else.
Exactly.
Put fences up, so.
Exactly, yeah. I think on the other side, I think that, you're right, Sean, there are fences, for the most part, around the other two sides of it, fences or brick walls of the building. So, but that stuck out to me, like I saw it now, I mean, there's just nothing there.
Right.
Okay.
Item B is that satisfactory assurance shall be provided to the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, codes, and requirements shall be met, which sets the condition of approval that we put on everything that they must comply with with any and all other city codes and ordinances. Then item F requires that the general purposes and spirit of the zoning ordinance and the master plan of the city shall be maintained. And we'll click on that, is the ordinance states that the purpose of that C3 district is to permit a mixture of residential office and commercial uses that do not necessarily adhere to the style of downtown buildings. And that district offers more automotive-oriented uses that aren't always compatible with residential uses. So the building form and site layout generally seem to align with that. One thing that I would mention is that the building itself looks like it's just steel paneling. And so it might be, you might want to think about, you know, something on that east elevation to kind of have some brick or a more.
I think a little more residential.
Yeah, well, more, less than the building. Well, maybe, you know, brick or a different kind of siding that has a more appealing. About that, too, when I looked at the front, I was like, it's too poor garbage. And then as far as the master plan is concerned, the master plan actually has this property in a mixed-use piece on this category, although not necessarily in a downtown-type mixed-use. So the plan requires that these areas should be generally as pedestrian-oriented as possible. And, you know, the buildings need to, you know, generally comply with that kind of slot scale, though, you know, making sure that we're encouraging pedestrian-scale, pedestrian-oriented development is something that you can certainly consider as being valuable for the application. So, you know, we, so we do, our recommendation was, we didn't necessarily recommend approval. You certainly can do that, there is some information that's missing that would be valuable for you moving forward in terms of locations of utility connections, stormwater, you know, the overall drainage and layout. As a general note, it's a little difficult to evaluate these, and it's unusual for us not to have a specific use in mind, so we can actually count the parking spaces and make sure that's compliant, like, you know, like, there's certainly proof for it. But if there are concerns about the completeness of the site plan, you can also direct the applicant to, you know, address some of these items, and you can approve a contingent on that and have them submit it to me for review. If you're more comfortable taking a look at it yourself at the next meeting, you can also table the application, ask for whatever. you can also table the application, ask for whatever information is in line, and then do it again at the October planning committee meeting. So that decision is up to you. And if there are any questions, of course, we'll let you know.
Commissioners, and I'm open to any suggestions here, but my, my thought on this is I would, I would prefer to table this until October, specifically to find out the questions that weren't answered. I'm not concerned about the size of the property and even the front yard setback. I get that. But dimensions of a typical parking space and unloading areas would be very helpful to have knowledge of and where the interior vehicles are going to go and unload and do those things. And even if it's a van or whatever it is, to have an idea of what that is. Number five, the existing zoning and use of all properties supporting the subject property. I think we need that just for adequate information if we do need to put a buffer up or don't. So, you know, again, that's another one I'd like to see. The location type and sizes of all proposed landscaping and location, height and type of existing and proposed fences and ways. Andy, I'd like to see you work with Sean and Rob to come on that. Frankly, we required everybody to do the proper buffering, the proper zoning, the things that were asked for. A fence along that parking lot, I find with that. But we need a recommendation so that we can discuss it and figure it out from there. And the, the whole thing with the fences and walls and all of that, it just seems like we need that. Size and location of existing proposed utilities, connections to the public water and water supplies. And you had mentioned that they should get an okay from our DPW and things of that nature. And I think that's appropriate before we get matured. Because that is the neighborhood neighbors out there, obviously. Size, location, things of that nature. Same with the water drainage facilities and all of that. And finally, the existing topographic contours at a minimum of five feet. I'm not real concerned about that. It's obviously a pretty flat area, but what about drainage and things of that nature? That becomes a problem. Especially with the parking lot right next to it and buildings on the other side. So drainage obviously does become an issue, I would think. So I, frankly, I just don't feel like I've got enough information here to adequately approve this at this point. I'm not opposed to the idea, but I do want to see the rest of the information. And I don't think it's the type of thing that we should vote on without, that's my opinion. Members? We're making a decision.
Okay.
Members, any other thoughts on it?
No, I'd like to see what we discussed a little bit more than what we currently have in front of us. It's too wide open. It's too much unknown for us to come, to make a final decision. I would like to see, you know, where the paving is going to stop. A lot of the drainage, I'd like to have Dan's input on to make sure that the water service coming in is three-quarters bigger. It's not the little half-pits. Sean, you're in, I understand that.
Yes, I do.
And make sure that we don't, you know, that they'll cast iron underneath for the sewer. I know you want to hook all into that, but that's all got life expectancy. And I just think, a little bit more homework. I don't, I think, I'm not opposed to the, to the, I actually think it's a wonderful idea to do something with that site, but at the end of the day, we just need more. I think we're getting there. I think we're, you know...
Documentation of the services and... I looked at this this week or this earlier this week or maybe this week, I forget when I got it. I was like, I kept on wondering, where's, I'm missing something. And I, I didn't know what, but going through it all, it's, it's, just need more documentation on some of the items that we talked about, I guess.
I think there needs to be more thought, maybe within group two and overall. I mean, if you guys are, you guys are late to the game in terms of the retail thing. So then the warehousing becomes more of an important factor. And that's like the one thing you know the area isn't truly zoned for. The C3 is like, whoa. So do you want a warehousing-type facility next to a residential facility? I don't know the answer, but is that like a, going to be an article of heartburn for people going forward? And is it worth it to you guys if you can't have retail and you're just doing warehousing? Do you want to go through it? I mean, that's like a gray area that people have to think about.
One thing to have storage, the other thing to have warehouse. Especially with no flams, like you're going to get on a rock.
Yeah, and so if you can have like storage vans coming and going and whatever in a residential area, and that's going to be your bread and butter is the warehousing and trade part of it rather than retail, then that's a different... John has now.
One of the points, you mentioned residential. This was rated as an R prior to the house burning down. So there is no residential next to this lotting. It is actually, it falls within the hundred feet away from it going to the south. And there is nothing northeast, south, or east, west, or north that falls within that residential range. So if you, if you want a buffer to buffer this property to the adjacent property to the south, we can do that. I don't know if a fence is what you're going to want there because when, when people to the south decide to put their building in, they're going to have to build something further that will buffer them from the residential directly to the south of that property.
Sean, what I'm saying is, we have done this with everybody else. And we've been fairly consistent about it. And I think what we're asking is that you work it out with Andy.
Okay.
And then we'll come back in October and reassess everything. And we'll kind of go through the same, same process, basically. But hopefully, we'll have more information so we can hone in on the questions and try to get the answers and try to come to a solution. So right now, there's just way too many questions for that to handle. But if you're working with Andy on this, Andy knows our thoughts here. He knows what we're looking for. And I think, you know, the two of you can get together and figure it out. That's my take on it.
Well, one of the things that you brought up, which is an aesthetic thing, is the east face. Because it is a metal structure. Would wainscote brick or faux brick be sufficient?
That's the kind of thing, if you talk with Andy about it, and come back with that suggestion. Work that out with Andy. I'm being honest with you. I'm not a builder, so I don't have a clue.
Well, I like the faux brick. I mean, he can do so much in that front. You could do ephors or stone, whatever you call it. There's so much you can do in that front for not a, just give it that look.
We're just saying, take that step.
It's not a cost, it's not a cost benefit.
Right. Take that step so that we can take a look at it and say, oh, okay, this makes some sense. Otherwise, you know, there's just too many questions, at least for me, and I assume for the rest of members.
And that front porch, I saw the overhang. I was like, right in my mind, I found the fireplace overhand. It's like, that is classy. It's, it's, look at that. That looks good. And I was like, I looked for that design aspect in these plans. I was like, I didn't see any of you.
You're not going to see the board pattern on this, Michael.
Well, I think the other, the other question is, Colin's got a great point, is that the warehouse is not for C3. So we need to resolve that issue and somehow, Andy, you're going to have to come up with some kind of suggestion for, I would say, whatever it may be. We'll have to make a decision to get there, but...
So I don't know, like warehouse, if it's a property-
Ma'am, could you give us your name and address, please?
Ryan Kozner. Ryan Kozner at 13992 Grand River Drive in Lowell Township. I'm the one that filled out the application and I'm the one that put warehouse. I'd like to scratch that at some point because it seems to have caused a lot of confusion. What if I had put storage? Detail and storage.
Again, Ryan, you and Sean and Andy.
I'm almost done.
I get, I get it. It looks like it's three-quarters.
We already met with Andy about the pre-qualification of the application. I forget what it's called, pre-application process.
Right, yeah, we've got a copy of it.
Andy filled us in with most of this stuff and we didn't seem to have any discrepancies at the time. At least not this many discrepancies. And at the time, warehouse wasn't brought up to me. I would have changed that at the moment.
And that's fine. That's fine. We're giving you, we're giving you that opportunity. We are absolutely giving you that opportunity. So, and we'll put you on the agenda in October. We'll come back and do it right. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, then let's, let's move on at this point. Staff report?
Anything?
If you're in, if you're in motion, then whatever you guys want.
And then if-
You want to make a motion?
If you can, that motion, you should have a list of all the, of the stuff that specifically you want to address. I've got a working list here by number two.
So you've gotten written down?
You've got it down.
So if you're just talking about additional information that you want, I have parking space, dimensions and lot layout, unloading areas, zoning of adjacent properties, landscaping plan, utility info okayed by the DPW, stormwater information. And then just information on the size of the water line. I think that they're the right size and all that. Is there anything else?
Warehouse question?
Yeah, there's something, even though warehouse isn't the current term of the facility, it looks like it's three-quarters storage space. So I don't know if that's, yeah, sixty-six percent of the...
And we need to resolve that issue.
I'll make a motion that with, with those little exceptions right there, I'd like to table this until our October meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Tony Ellis, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Having said that, and thank you to the applicants. Staff report? Andy, anything further?
We'll have two public hearings coming to the October meeting. One of them will be on the Grand Rapids gravel property on Bowes Road.
Grand Rapids gravel?
Yep. And then if any other information comes in, there is another proposed marijuana retailer on Eighth Street that has submitted an application. And given that is, they were missing a bunch of information last time, so we sent them, you know, hoping they were presenting a lot for the marijuana side.
Because that's the site that contact can be with. No car dealership?
No, this one is by the theater.
Oh, okay.
In that home back there.
I have a question about the, the numerous applicants for marijuana places. Are we, what is drawing, what is drawing them to Lowell? Is there something that allows them?
What is that?
You're the only one who allows them.
Except for Grand Rapids.
They're not, they're not up and running yet.
So you're still, so far as I know, you're one of the only, if not the only community in Kent County that allows for the recreational, Grand Rapids and a bunch of others have allowed. But they have not finalized their standalone licensing and zoning work for this more recreational.
Makes more sense as well.
You guys were one of the, you guys were the first ones to have an ordinance adopted in place.
Really? I mean, it's just up to us to make sure they're compliant with the ordinances, right? And we can, depending on whether or not we want ten.
It brings for to the win. Whether they spend time here or not, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it was, we talked about that. We had a couple of meetings with county planning committee joint meetings, where we discussed, you know, whether or not the city should cap on how many of them, the consensus, which is that bodies would probably not. You know, we'll let the market try to decide how many there needs to be.
And I do think that's true of some people. They'll outcompete each other and it'll go back down.
Yeah, it will. Or as other, as other areas like Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids already, they know their area. I believe they're still working on their own basis for it, correct?
Last I heard, yeah, I didn't, I didn't talk about it.
Yeah, so, you know, that's a huge market over there, so...
Cedar Springs too is a, you know, one.
Yeah, sure. And they're, they're going to start running into the same problems. It becomes, eventually they'll all...
On the other hand, there's a liquor store on every street corner, so, you know, let's, let's be real about this. It could continue.
If we do have a plethora of stores, it could be good if people come here to shop around, so to speak. For, people are drawn to more stores than just one, two. You know, it's like, let's go to Lowell and go get our stuff. They got six places. Let's make a day of it, you know? Not that we really want to be known for our...
Someone's got to open a vending machine, like, construction company next to each other. Doritos and brownies.
Brownies?
Brownies, Doritos.
Yeah. So we're also, are we still on for anything on the zoning ordinance themselves?
Yep, so we have, I think, one or two more chapters to look at. Frankly, I've just been waiting for a meeting where there's nothing else. I can do that, so. We're having a lot of applications lately, so as soon as, and obviously, it's not going to be October, but as soon as we have a slow one, I will get the last couple of chapters in front of me.
Okay, good. Just, I don't want to lose track of it.
Yep.
Commissioners, you want?
Colin?
I think we did a good thing by tabling this, but I wasn't very comfortable asking it.
Yeah, I agree with that. Amanda? Mike?
Is, are we still doing like the joint meeting with the other townships?
Yes, it should be coming up in October. Sue's got the date.
Okay.
She, she had the date. In fact, I'll, I'll try to get down to City Hall, like confirm that. I don't know if we want to do that, given the, the meetings.
Yeah.
We may, we may need to postpone it. I don't know. So I'll, I'll try to get down and see, and have, have Sue send out an email to everybody.
Sue's not there right now, but Amy's coordinated.
Okay.
Next year, you're owed a town.
Amy, in the past, we've done rotating meetings with the virgins in Lowell Township and us. And we're due to have it, and we're due to have it in October. And I think Sue's got it on her calendar. But the question is, is whether or not we can even do it, given, given the limitations.
Yeah, because whether in October, I can guarantee we probably aren't going to be able to do it here.
No, no, no. If we can't do it, we can't do it at the hall. We'll just have to postpone it and everybody will be fine.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not going to go that long. Yeah. It's not, it's not good. Good thought, though.
My turn to comment.
Yep.
All right, gentlemen, ladies. So Thursday last week, Pink Arrow approached me and said, hey, you need to do us a favor. We'd like you to take care of getting us a movie screen put up at the fairgrounds for the Pink Arrow games so we can stream it from the stadium.